Going in for people hosting meetings and all. I would ask that you take the time to go through that information. I think you'll find it very, very helpful and informative and frankly pick up on some common themes. I couldn't help but notice that. Okay. That being said, we'll go ahead and get started with the city manager's briefing. First one, selected crime statistics and trends.
Mayor, if I might, members of council, the agenda today is really four items that council members had requested information on, so we thought we'd just package them up and kind of have council day today. And so hopefully you can receive the information and we'll have some discussion on these items. So the first one is there was a concern about crime statistics in terms of violent crime and particularly what's going on with drugs in the community. I think you all probably saw the article in the paper this morning.
I couldn't help but, yeah, it's worse than the crash.
Talked about more people dying of drug overdoses in the Commonwealth and of car accidents, so the chief is here to walk you through this.
All right, chief, glad to have you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Spohr, Mr. Stiles. What I'm going to go through, this is basically three quarters of the year statistics. I will come back in January to give a complete picture of what the police department has done in the realm of crime, in the realm of responding to calls for service and special events through the entire year, but I'll do that in January. Because there was a concern, and I think the concern was raised because we had a series of incidents in a very concentrated period of time. We had a series of homicides, we had a series of shootings during that particular period of time. I could tell you a lot of those cases are being diligently worked by the detective bureau, by our special investigations unit, and a lot of that I cannot comment on at this time. What we can do though is go through some of the statistical data that we have. You know, if you look at the year 2010, and that wasn't the highest year we had violent crime activity, look at the numbers for robbery and where we are today compared to robbery in 2010. We're much lower than where we were, and a few years before that we were even higher. Now, there's a number of reasons why crime is reduced, there's a number of reasons why crime will increase. We'd like to say that we play a part of some of that. And what we did from 2010 until today is we rearranged how we respond to certain crime hotspots, how we put together our rapid response team which is able to go out at a moment's notice, change schedules, change days off, and work particular areas of the city so that as a crime pattern develops, we could respond to it. One of the things though that we do notice is the area of aggravated assault. We break aggravated assault out in two factors. One is intra-family, intra-familia.
If you want to say.
Yeah, it's easy for me to say. Aggravated assault cases, not that we diminish that, but there's not a lot that the police could do in those particular cases. And then we have what we call street cases, which are cases which are out into public where we have aggravated assault cases. What we do notice in these cases is that use of a firearm is up. Now, it's not only up in Virginia Beach, it's up nationwide. As I attend meetings with the Major City Chiefs Association, we know that the number of gun cases across the country has risen tremendously in the last year. Not a tremendous rise in Virginia Beach, but we have seen some of those, John. And what we did, wanted to do for you was break it out for the totals for firearms. And again, as you could see, the aggravated assault cases, we had 54 cases this year with use of a firearm, which if we keep going at this rate will be higher than the last two previous years. I said anecdotally, we noticed that there are a lot of additional cases where we are making arrests with folks that have concealed firearms. We're making a lot more arrests on cases we go to where the case, what we would call would be a shots fired case, where people are just shooting guns either at each other or just indiscriminately in a particular area. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. And our firearm violation charges are tracking pretty steady. Now, these are cases that would be a concealed weapon. These are cases where a firearm is discharged. These could be a number of different kinds of cases. This isn't a case where one individual actually shoots another individual. But I do want you to notice the number of times that our police officers are responding to cases where a firearm is being used. The other question that everyone had was on our heroin issue. We're going to go straight to the numbers. We've had 109 overdose cases so far this year. That's extremely high.
Wow.
And we're not alone. Across the state, it's across the country. Again, with the work that we do nationally, we know that some places in the New England area, heroin is so prevalent right now that the police officers were the first ones in the country to carry naloxone. I will get to that momentarily about our use of naloxone, which will be coming up shortly. But this problem has been mainly East Coast, and it has just spearheaded in the last couple of years. You can see the numbers, they speak for themselves. There's a number of reasons why, working with the heroin task force at the governor's level, why we've seen some of this. A lot of it has to do with prescription opioids. An individual is using a prescription, they're allowed to use the prescription, suddenly prescription runs out, they don't realize it, but their body and their mind wants that opioid, so they go out and they find it where they can find it. Therefore, they turn to heroin. Now, our overdose death cases, we're tracking just like the rest of the state. We have more overdose death cases than we do fatal crashes. And we're working all of these cases. I will explain a little bit more how we work the specific case, but we do want you to know that we're up to 28 as of September of this year. And if I remember correctly, Deputy Chief Dean, we had one just the other day. So we're tracking higher than we've ever tracked before on heroin. Wanted to give you an idea on demographic data. It's mainly white male. They account for about 60% of all cases. And again, most of these individuals are on some kind of heroin either for a short period of time because of the prescriptions or they're a longtime heroin users. What we find a lot of times is an individual will become incarcerated, and as soon as they get out, they go right back to heroin, but now their body's not used to that dose, they take the same dose that they used to take before, and it's a lethal dose for them. You know, I'm always asked, what about violent crime and heroin? We have not seen this significant increase because of violent crimes that are associated with the distribution of heroin, nor do we see a big increase. We have had cases, and some were very highly publicized, where an individual is addicted to either a prescription or to heroin, where it winds up into a violent crime. The case at the Oceanfront with, and I apologize, I do not remember the name of the individual, but it was at the pharmacy down at the Oceanfront. So we do see cases like that. We do see armed robberies where folks will come into a pharmacy and they will do an armed robbery strictly for the prescription medication, the opioid prescription medication, not for any money, not for any other kind of goods that they could take. You read the article today? We thought that we would let you know that the pilot put together this particular article, and it shows 728 Virginians died from drug overdoses in 2014. I don't know what the number's going to be statewide, but if they're tracking the same thing as Virginia Beach, that's going to be up. We have taken a real hard look at a lot of these cases. What we do now, special investigations, officers respond to every heroin overdose. Uniform officers will call them out to the scene, and right there we start doing an investigation on that particular case. A number of years ago, if we had an overdose case, the uniform officers would go, we would render aid to the individual, we'd get them into the proper medical facility, and we would basically take an overdose report. And now what we do is immediately we contact special investigations and the detectives so they respond out to every one of these cases. They're labor intense, very labor intense, and most of the information that they have to receive is information that's hidden. You know, we may watch TV where they go to these great computer banks and they tell you everything you ever wanted to know because the TV set it up that way, but in real life, this information that they need to garner is well-hidden. We have made a number of large-scale arrests. We are taking some of our cases federal if we have to. At the time, if we do that, we can secure a felony homicide arrest. We're changing the law in the state to be able to mirror, we hope we'll be able to change the law in the state to be able to mirror that of the federal government. We have seized a lot of narcotics off the street, specifically we're over 2.6 kilograms of heroin, which is a lot of heroin to seize. We have done a lot of training with our officers. The training, we call it roll call training, where we get to our officers and let them know what to look for when they go to a particular case. Once they get to that case, they're immediately to contact detectives. Now, remember, a lot of times when they get to these cases, the folks who are around the individual, the victim, are very reluctant to just all of a sudden give us information. This is the kind of case, as I said, is very well-hidden. We also let the officers know that a lot of heroin is being cut with another drug called fentanyl, so therefore they have to remember that when they get to that scene, they need their proper protective equipment. Yes, we want to render first aid to the victim, we want to be able to secure the scene, but the officers need to know that they need to take care of themselves first. Naloxone. Naloxone is one of these drugs that counteracts the effect of the opioid. It is intended to prevent an overdose or death from heroin. We are currently in the training phase on how to properly use naloxone. If you remember, last year we did have a state code change that came directly out of the task force that the governor has up and running in which we, a lot of police chiefs basically said, we need to be able to administer this right with fire and rescue. There are cases where we will get there before fire and rescue, and so we just felt the need, as we did with the AEDs and the tourniquets, to be able to render the proper aid to the individual. So we are in the training stage right now. As far as implementation goes, we hope to have the implementation early next year. There are some issues that we have to deal with, such as the temperature range that you have to keep this particular anecdote in. It can't go above 95 degrees and it can't go below another certain factor, or it will be rendered useless. So we're working through all that. By the way, I do want you to know that we're working very closely with Dr. Kuhlberg and our health department. They've been excellent in assisting us every step of the way because we're now venturing into an area where police do not normally venture into, and that is administering some kind of a drug to an individual. We're also heavily engaged in community outreach. If you know this police department, you know that we're going to turn to the community every chance we can get. Again, we've turned to the experts at DHS. They've done a great job with us. What we're trying to do is help a lot of the individuals who might be addicted get the help they need first before they have to turn to the naloxone and the police arriving on the scene. We don't want to get to that place. What we want to try and do is get them the assistance that they need prior to just going to the other places. And John, finally, there is a program, Revive. I thought I'd put a slide up showing the information that we do give out, and it's for heroin and other opioid users. What we're hoping is that we can get to family members of the individual. Nobody wakes up in the morning and says, I can't wait to become a heroin addict. Nobody in sixth grade, when they go around in school saying, what do you want to be when you grow up? Nobody raises their hand and says, I want to be addicted to heroin. It happens. And we know that most folks have some kind of family or friend support system, and what we're going to try and do is reach out to them and say, if we can get the individual to help on this end, it would be better than having to get it at the very last stage. For us as a society, it's a lot less expensive to be able to counteract an opioid user early on in their life.
We thank you very much, chief. Any questions or comments? Shannon?
I know we've got some controversial things out there that you've requested in the budget, whether some approved or disapproved, body cameras, et cetera. Is there anything here that you need from us that you would like to see in helping you with this serious situation?
We will come forward with some budget requests. As far as specific to heroin, the only thing that I could probably ask for would be additional personnel to investigate these cases. We know that we have a pretty good robust procedure in assisting the emergency response system, again with the AEDs and with the tourniquets. We may need a piece of equipment, which if we can't find in the existing budget, I will come back to council. But right now, we're doing okay with what we have. It will come a time where we're going to have to replace the naloxone because it'll have a certain shelf life, and what we will need to do at that time is to find the funding to replace the naloxone.
Are you working with the schools? Is this something that we're seeing at a younger age with high school kids or anything? Or is there a situation there?
It runs the entire gamut. What we see with younger folks is there will be, anecdotally, there are cases where kids graduate high school, they played sports, they get injured, they go to the doctor, the doctor writes a legal prescription, then for whatever reason, that is the opioid that they need, they can't get that opioid, so then they go to heroin. So what we're seeing, the entire gamut of ages.
Amelia?
Well, that's what's pretty much the second question that you had. I was wondering, because I noticed you had ethnicity, but you didn't have ages, like whether it's more youth or whether it's older, because we hear many mixed messages as though it could be in the schools or in situations like that. Is there something more like a recreational aspect more than a medical? Because we're hearing both. What do you have to say about that?
Yes, yes to both questions. What we're seeing is a larger gamut. Deputy Chief, what is our age range?
Off the spectrum. It's fairly evenly distributed. It's surprising to us to see the number of people with kids.
With 15?
Overdosing. But we've seen young teens, not very young teens, but teenagers as well. So it really does, I haven't pulled the distribution of ages, but something I could follow up with, that we see throughout the age groups.
Okay. And just the second question, I know we have a high military presence here, and they have different medical problems. Is there a high amount in that area?
I've seen, it doesn't appear that we've seen many military in this situation.
Thank you.
But if one of the issues would be, are we seeing this in high schools? Are kids selling heroin in high schools? No. We're not seeing that. Kids could use various sundry substances in high school, but we're not seeing heroin in high school.
Is it illegal for me to lock my kid in the closet?
Until they're 18 would be fine with me. No, but no, but on a serious note, and I know this is going out to the whole city, parents, take an active role in your child's life. For example, the bedroom that they live in is not their domain, that is the parent's domain, and so is it legal for you to go in anytime and search through the drawers? Absolutely, and I highly recommend it.
Jim Wood?
Thanks. Looking at the heroin overdoses, and it appears it's more than doubled in the last year, and you indicated you have a dedicated squad from SID now looking strictly at heroin overdoses. So when you're talking about budgets and things like that, what is the impact on the rest of SID's mission, for example, if you've got these officers pulled off of investigating normal things? What's not being investigated because of this?
Well, we're holding our own on a number of the other investigations, but to be very honest, SID is one of those places where there's never enough. Folks, I think if we look at the quote war on drugs for all the years we've been involved, drugs are still here, I think they're always going to be here. Sometimes I'll say flippant to someone, dope is everywhere. So while they're working these cases, they still pull other cases that they're working. The difference with this is usually SID makes their own cases. This is one of the situations where they're handed a case and then they run with it, and they do a magnificent job.
John Moss?
When the Commonwealth attorney, I mentioned the city manager, she testified before the House Judiciary Committee when Randy Forbes was there, and she talked about heroin usage in Chesapeake specifically. But during her testimony, which if you haven't read, I highly recommend that you get it, you can get it from the C-stand or off the internet, she talked about that they're actually in Chesapeake, they were seeing territories where people that were doing distribution were actually setting up territories within their city. And while there wasn't violent crime per se outside the distributor's network, there was violent activity and behavior between the people doing the distribution. And I'm just, since that's a very suburban character community like ourselves, I'm just curious how much of that characterization that she had in Chesapeake is applicable to Virginia Beach, and to what extent, and I'm sure you do talk of Chesapeake, how are we different, how are we the same? And I'm just curious on that.
We have cases in our city where we've had disputes between drug dealers, for lack of any other term, as to who's going to be in what area or who's going to distribute drugs in and around a certain area. Whether or not it's specific to heroin, I'm not going to say it is because actually that's not the biggest distribution network we have. We have other distribution networks for various other drugs where we know we will have violent encounters between individual drug dealers. So yes, it's the same as it is anywhere across the country. There's a market, they're filling this market, and they don't like if somebody else tries to fill their market.
Well, following up on Jim's comment, I realize that some aspects of this controversy were, you know, clearly there needs to be more about dealing with the people that have the problems and how you can help them because in the long run, we're always going to have a drug issue. But nonetheless, you always want your community to be the least profitable, least chance to go undetected community if you're in the distribution business. And I know you don't want to tell all your story here, appreciate that too, but I would appreciate in the right forum at the right time to know what is it of the techniques that are the most successful and whether or not, and it's not always the case that it will, but whether or not resources makes a difference in making this a more unattractive place for those people to operate in, and just what that relationship is. I would appreciate learning that in a different place.
Mr. Moss, you know we'd be more than happy to have that sidebar conversation in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you very much. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Chief Rivera, I saw the statistics went back to 2010. I don't know how long we kept those statistics. Is this shaping up to be the, historically, the highest year for overdose deaths?
Yes, it is.
Other questions or comments before we wind it up? You know, I guess I'm going to give you my takeaway here. I mean, first of all, I think everyone at this table is concerned about the amount of heroin and the impact it's having in our city. As it is, we know it's nothing, we know it's occurring across the country for that matter, but you know, we're very concerned about it. I guess my takeaway that I heard you say that you could do a better job in addressing it, it would be more troops. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir.
Are we still, are we not in the game anymore as far as getting the feds to pay for police for two or three years that we take it on? I know we just did something with the fire department a couple of weeks ago. I mean, what's the status of getting that money?
We have applied for grants through the community policing office. That's for most of the grant funding is coming through. We have two issues, and I'd like to just say that we are pretty much a victim of our own success. We're very-
I don't doubt that.
We're fiscally prudent in our city, so we don't have the layoffs, we don't have some of those issues that other cities around the country have, and our crime rate by and large for a city of this size is low. So those are two of the main factors that are looked at. In other words, the money that we were talking about, that you just mentioned, came out through President Clinton a number of years ago where they put 100,000 police officers out in society. We wrote a number of those grants, and we did receive a number of police officers through those.
Oh, I remember, I remember the good old days. It's like I'm back.
A lot of those grants. That funding stream has shrunk dramatically, so they look at a couple of key factors, and then once they start assigning, it's a point system, once they start assigning certain points to where we are on budgetary matters, on fiscal conservative matters, where are we on crime matters, we just don't get the numbers that the other cities do, and a lot of times, that's where the money goes.
So we get punished for doing good?
Well, the victim of your own success.
Of the time.
Yeah, all right. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. And we thank you for the hard work you all are doing to address it, and we got to be there to, this is bad stuff.
And again, and I need to keep repeating this, the issue we see in the beach is no different than what they're seeing across the entire Commonwealth of Virginia and most of the country. We know where it's coming from, we know why it's cheap, and it is just one of those things that has reared its ugly head again. It has a cycle, it's back again.
Well, I know we're going to figure it in that cycle quickly. Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on to group home location factors. This was in our packet over the weekend, and Barry?
Mr. Mayor, if I can introduce the topic, that would be-
Mark, it'd be my pleasure. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce you all to Mark Stiles, the city attorney.
I didn't need the introduction, I wanted to make the introduction.
The city attorney would like to make this introduction. Mr. Stiles, I recognize you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's good to be recognized. Kay Wilson in my office is actually going to make the presentation. A number of council members have asked questions recently about how group homes are approved and regulated. And we did put a presentation in your package. The presentation that we're giving today is slightly modified and shortened, but, so it is slightly different, I wanted you to know that. I think the takeaway here is these group homes are at the point of intersect between the city zoning ordinance, the state code, and two major federal regulatory programs. And so how every jurisdiction does this is slightly different, but, and we can discuss that in as much detail as you want, but Kay is here to give you sort of the general overview, and then we'll respond to questions.
I want to thank you for that very nice introduction, Mr. City Attorney. Kay, we welcome you.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council. Today, we're just going to get a general overview of the concept of family and group homes. We need to start first with the city zoning ordinance. Section 111 is the definitional section. It lists all the definitions for the zoning ordinance. There it contains the definition of family and the non-definition of group home. We do not have a definition of group home in the zoning ordinance. And I want you to understand that any living arrangement that meets the definition of family is permitted by right in residential zoning districts. They don't have to get a CUP, they don't have to do anything. It's all by right. And the definition of family that we use in the zoning ordinance is based on the state code provisions and is broader than what you would traditionally think of as being a family. And it includes some groups that you would think of as being group homes. They are defined as a family, and as such, they do not require a CUP. Okay, so now we come to the definition of family. It's an individual living alone in a dwelling unit. That's kind of traditional. Or any of the following groups of persons who live together and share living arrangements. Two or more people who are related, blood, marriage, adoption, foster care. A group of two adults with their dependent children who are not related. Then there's also a group of not more than four persons who are unrelated by blood, marriage, adoption, or foster care. These are really the traditional ideas that we think of when we think of family. These are traditional families. There are others that are less traditional, but they're still considered a family, and most of these are required by state code. They are actually explicitly set out in the state code under 15.2-2291. The first is a group of eight, who, persons who have mental illness, intellectual disabilities, or developmental disabilities, who reside with or without resident counselors. And all of this is licensed by the Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services. The second group-
Without, but that says with. Is it with or with or without?
Well, it says with one or more resident or non-resident staff.
But they got to have at least one person besides them, because you said with or without.
The person who is staffed does not have to reside in the property.
Okay, got you.
The second is a group of eight aged, infirm, or disabled persons, and this is regulated by the Department of Social Services. So these are families. These group homes, as we would normally think of them, are really families in regard to- to the zoning ordinance. And 15.2-2291 provides that these group homes cannot be subjected to conditions more restrictive than those imposed on residences occupied by those related by blood, marriage, or adoption. So you can't impose anything upon these that you wouldn't oppose upon a family. They have to be treated just like a family. Which would include the requirement that they can't be required to have a conditional They have a right, a by right, we like to use those words, a by right to have, to reside in all areas where a single-family dwelling could legally be built. So all of these people are family and that's the definition. Now, if a group didn't meet the definition of family, it's something outside of this, then the residents may then be a group home. A group home is a conditional use with a conditional use permit in planned development, apartment, agriculture, residential, and B4. However, we've gotten there, but then we have to also comply with federal law. I'm not pretty good at that. And the two federal laws that come into play really are the Fair Housing Amendments Act and Americans with Disabilities Act. And the handicapped under the FHAA and the disabled under the ADA also are prohibited from being discriminated against and require reasonable accommodations. And if you're disabled or handicapped, and I'm going to try to remember which term I'm going to use, I'm going to try to use disabled, then you are an individual with a mental or physical impairment which substantially limits one or more major life activity. An impairment can be a broad range of things, from blindness to mental retardation. I should let you know that alcoholism and drug abuse is an impairment as long as you are recovering. Active drug abuse or active alcoholism is not. However, if you are in recovery, it is an impairment. Learning disabilities, mental illness, physical disabilities. And major life activities are also very broad. Seeing, hearing, walking, learning, working, all of this is very, very broad. Now, there is a, one of these group homes or recovery houses is an Oxford House. And I want to go through exactly what they are and how we have treated them in the city. Oxford House Incorporated is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit umbrella organization. It charters each individual Oxford House throughout the nation. An Oxford House, in order to get a charter from Oxford House Incorporated, has to have six or more same-sex recovering individuals from drugs or alcohol. The houses are democratically self-run. They're financially self-supporting. And in the charter, it says that they must immediately expel any resident who relapses.
How does this differ from family?
Okay, this is, we're going to get there if you give me a minute. Okay? We're going to get there. So the Oxford House, that's how they're run. And they're all pretty much run on the same basic principle. Their website lists 11 of these in the city of Virginia Beach and 118 in the Commonwealth of Virginia. What they say, their goal is, is that the Oxford House has as its primary goal the provision of housing and rehabilitative support for the alcoholic and drug addict who wants to stop drinking or using drugs and stay stopped. In its simplest form, an Oxford House describes a self-run, self-supporting, and drug-free Now, the ADA and the FHAA prevent the city from treating a recovery home, such as the Oxford House, with, serving individuals with a disability, as the Oxford House does, as defined by the acts, any different than any other residences housing groups that's defined as a family. So the Oxford House, in essence, is a family. Because the Virginia Code and the city zoning ordinance define non-related individuals with intellectual or developmental disabilities as a family, these groups don't have to apply for or receive a CUP. Accordingly, group homes such as Oxford House, which serve individuals with other federally recognized disabilities or impairments, are not required to apply for or receive a CUP either. So if you have a group of individuals, you have to see if they are a family. If they're a family, including these group homes, meeting the definition, then they don't have to get a CUP. If they're a group home that doesn't meet the definition of family, you have to then look to see, if they're not disabled, a group of disabled or handicapped, then we can still require a CUP. However, if there is a federally recognized disability or handicap involved, then what we end up back at is that they are a family and that that's where we cannot require a CUP at that time.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
We've got some questions already lined up. Bobby D.
Yeah, thank you. And I want to thank the staff for putting this together. You know, yes, we did have a few concerns, you know, expressed throughout the community. And one of the things I'm going to request is that we have CDs made for this presentation that we can distribute, you know, to folks when they come up. Because once again, you know, I think the proliferation of these type of things, not only happening in Virginia Beach, but they're happening throughout the country as they closed down the southeastern facility. You know, the attempt was to mainstream them into the neighborhoods. And we look things up like Vets House and some successful things. But I think, you know, some of the concerns of the community are when, you know, when one opens up next door, you know, might there be a better way of communication to let the neighbors know, you know, this is what we're doing and why and, you know, and, you know, just kind of good neighbor policy. But I, you know, have some very proactive, pro-community people in my neighborhood. One in particular that has a group home in the Charlestown area that is, you know, sex offenders. And this creates some angst within the community in terms of home values and safety and, you know, things of that nature. And if you recall, a couple of years ago, we had a group home on city property close to Salem Middle where they had at youth risk teenagers there. And then it was switched to, you know, felons on parole and they went out and did a armed robbery at the Walmart down the line. So I think there's a community concern that, you know, once again, I really think there's a lot of value added. As a physical therapist, I've worked in a lot of places where there, you know, senior daycare centers. You know, let's face it, we have daycare centers which are within the community. You know, they can, you know, bring a lot of value, but I think by enhancing communication when they do go into a neighborhood, you know, they can, you know, it might be helpful. But I think we really have to take seriously, you know, the concerns of some of the neighbors that might be, you know, when you have, you know, a group of sex offenders, you know, like, you know, they are spread throughout the city, you know, you can look at a map and find out. But when you start putting, you know, people in a group situation, you know, the neighbors, you know, then become concerned. And, you know, the risk, you know, once again, it was pointed out to me that one of the neighbors there, when the husband is at work or deployed with the Navy, you know, there's a fear, you know, of having, you know, some types of group homes in the neighborhood. So I think that would be helpful, you know, this is something that we're going to really have to address.
Thank you very much, John Moss.
My question, I understand, I'll go back, look at Chart 11 if I could. It's clearly where you have the ones that are licensed by the state with administrative. I'm just curious, where you have the self, what does the federal regulation provide in terms of these other organizations where they're chartered? What is the oversight? And how do we go about determining when the operation of what's taking place there doesn't match the requirement that they say they're meeting and people who don't qualify are there or change? What's the oversight of those, I'll call them the more like franchise homes, I guess that's a way to put it, independently owned and operated? What is the responsibility, does Charter have to, does this Oxford House have some reporting requirement to the feds? Is there some regulatory oversight that they have to meet? You know, just what is the, I'm this, they claim they're this, is there any independent certification that this is it or that Oxford just signs a piece of paper and that makes it all good? I'm just curious what the independent assessment is as to the ongoing continuing legitimacy of the operation.
I can't tell you that they report to the federal government. They are, however, an incredibly large and well-organized group. They do a lot of studies to prove that what they are doing and the way an Oxford House is run is beneficial. They have a lot of recidivism statistics as to how the Oxford House principle of living in a community and living in a group setting is beneficial for the recovering addict. They are not required to report to the federal government. It is a self-run, independent organization. The houses report to the overall umbrella and they have to meet the standards of the overall Oxford House Incorporated. But they are self-run.
Okay, so if I'm in a neighborhood and I probably do have good statistics, but it's amazing that there's no oversight as we would have on the other places because they're licensed. So someone lives in a neighborhood-
Yes, sir.
-and they think something's happening there that shouldn't be happening there and isn't in accordance with what they understand by going to the website and looking up themselves. And people are pretty good about that. And they say, I'm filing a complaint. Who do they file a complaint with and what is the process by which that complaint is acted on?
Well, they are run by districts. When we had an issue, we had an issue in the neighborhood and Karen Lasley and I went with Ms. Kane to a community meeting. The representative from the district came. I have a card. I have a name. If there is a problem, we can contact Oxford House by contacting the head of this district. The district runs those houses in, I believe, North Carolina and Virginia.
So the only recourse then, since they are individually owned and operated, is for the people to individually civilly sue the people that are at the place if they think they're not in compliance? I'm just asking a question because the people in the district don't have any ownership of the franchise. All they can do is revoke the Charter. They have no, I'm just trying to understand, you know, where is the real accountability is not with Oxford House, it's with the people, residents of the home, correct?
Yes, sir. They are self-run.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand. Thank you.
Before my question, but John, at that meeting that she's referring to, what we've found is that you, as a property owner, have a house, you want to rent it. You sign up with Oxford House to put your property in their program. The tenants of that house then pay Oxford House. Oxford House pays you your rent. So if the tenant is late on their rent, you don't have to worry about it as the property owner. You're getting your money from, so you've got guaranteed income coming in for your rental property. And then the bill collecting is on Oxford House to collect that rent.
Well, I hear that Oxford House really is, the people we go, other we see, really are legally liable.
Well, then what, the words of advice to the neighborhood that evening were to talk to these homeowners and plead with them and their signing up for this service. Because in that particular neighborhood, there was what, five?
Five.
Yeah, there were five of them and I think three or four of them are owned by one man who happens to have several in Kinsville and I think Centerville as well. So this guy says, I'm not going to stop because I've got guaranteed income from my rental properties.
Got you.
But my question is, in what Bobby was saying and being a mom myself and you worry about the whole sex offender thing, is sex offender considered something that is an approved familial class or?
No, sex offender under the FDA, and it's the FDA, under the Fair Housing Act and the ADA is not a disability, nor is being a felon or being a juvenile offender. They are not classified as disabilities.
So they would still have to come to you for a CUP for a group home?
So if, for instance, Oxford House has four residents and one of them happens to be on a registered sex offender list that lives there, could the neighborhood then say, we want this person out of our neighborhood? How does that work? Can we protect our kids and our single women?
I don't, I don't believe that we can actually get a list of who lives in the property. I don't think that's a requirement. We don't require another family-
Sex offenders have to have made their-
But they have to register.
They have to register.
After registering, they can't be so far from, you know, children and schools and all of those kinds of restrictions.
There's a website you can go on. Right, and so these neighborhoods have. They've gone on and they know that John, Sally, and Fred are registered sex offenders and that's why they're more up in arms than anything. So is there any recourse that we can, I mean, how do you, I don't know. What do you do? I mean, my next door neighbor could be for, you know, I-
Well, yeah, it could be, I mean, anybody in a family, you know, somebody's son, daughter, uncle, whatever it could be.
Rules that relate to sex offenders still apply here as to where they can live and where they can't live and what kind of notification they have to make to be available to the community. I guess the point here would be a group home for sex offenders or convicted felons released from jail, that group home as a collection, that would be a group home that had to come to you for a CUP and you could impose reasonable restrictions. But if one of eight members in an Oxford House has a prior conviction that would put them on the sex offender list, I don't think that has any impact on the requirement that the house itself has to be differently categorized, if that makes sense.
Because they still have a disability. Their disability is their addiction.
And if there's no more than four, they-
They could live together anyway.
But there's nothing you can do. They have a right to be there.
Amelia?
We have some problems in Kinsville, especially Fairfield community. And my concern, first of all, and it brought this up, that we are pretty much the last people knowing this is there. And then they write us as council people and assume we have allowed it. And this is because it hasn't gone through the CUP and so forth. We do not know. But we have enough neighbors who are diligent to go and look things up and notice there are certain different things going on in their communities. They are concerned. Is there a way that we can talk with state, federal in some form to address amount of homes in one community? For example, in Fairfield, we already are on our fourth. I've been to the zoning. On Friday, as you know, I served on the state board, so I went up there. But of course, the commissioner has resigned. We have an interim. And a lot of the people around the table, the rest of the state board, people did not even know about the problem because it doesn't reach that level. So they were excited that our city manager is taking that step to at least, you know, inform us and would love to get a copy of what we have. So it shouldn't be something like that, that the leaders do not know this is happening. We get, in fact, I had a bunch of letters come to me because they said, we found out that you are the elected official on the state, so you have allowed that. And I had to explain to them, no, this happens at a different level. I have found out the name of the licensing director to see if something can happen because these are beautiful homes in that area. And they're concerned, first of all, that so many are in one neighborhood and once the word gets out, you know, all kind of ideas come up. People are looking at trying to sell their homes now and all of this and habits, even though the Discriminating Act, no, it's there. But there is that concern. And we're wondering, is there any way that there can be like a map of data, all right, you've had five here, check the next neighborhood, but don't keep adding just because someone's property isn't selling. These people are great at hunting out properties to get this. The second thing people are concerned is the upkeep of the property. Because if it's well-kept, you hardly know someone's there. But people are saying, a running down, we have one of the Oxford homes, I had to make sure we had at least police presence because sometimes at night, when whoever the self-run person is asleep, these people come on out, visit the neighborhoods. And people have neighborhood watches and they are- And people have neighborhood watches and they are diligently watching this.
Well, as, as we've been talking about, we need to treat these group homes as a family. So you wouldn't require a family, even a, a large family, to have to do those kinds of things. I will tell you that when we had the conversation within Ms. Kane's district, that the district representative said that she felt they were, that there were all the Oxford Houses that this neighborhood could take and that she would make an effort to see that there were not more of them placed in the neighborhood. It may require a voluntary communication of that kind of, and that kind of information to Oxford House, to the, the Department of Behavioral and Behavioral Sciences. They may need to know that, that there are a lot of them in a neighborhood, but it would have to be really a voluntarily, voluntary thing.
That's the step I'm kicking up there.
I, I will tell you also, I called around to some of my colleagues in other localities and I looked at the Oxford House website and they list by community, by specific address, the name and location and the number of residents in the house. And for two different jurisdictions that I called, I told them that they had an Oxford House and that was the first knowledge that they had that they had one. So the fact that, that, that you as decision makers don't know, I fully understand and appreciate, but I just want you to know, you're not alone in your, in your frustration with that issue.
And the community needs to know that we have that. Because you see with the Oxford House, as you said, it has a district and so forth. But the group homes are individuals that are house hunting. They get one here, one there. So they don't have that same rules and regulations like the Oxford Home. I've been by that one, it's well-kept. But these independent group homes.
Now, are you talking about the group homes that we're counting as families that are? Okay, well, they are overseen by the state agencies. So the state agencies should know where they are and there are incredible. They have to be licensed by them.
And I even asked our Department of Human Services, how many? And seemingly they said, that many? So then who do we talk to?
Maybe a state regulatory issue.
Okay, thank you.
What? Barbara, you go right ahead.
Uh, well, I was just going to mention something that I spoke with, I believe the same, um, uh, woman that Bobby Dyer spoke with and, um, kind of following up with where Shannon, um, was asking questions. Um, it's kind of disturbing to me that, uh, a group for sex offenders would need a CUP. However, if one of those sex, or if those sex offenders happened to be addicts, then they wouldn't. Um, can we get some sort of definitive determination on that? I mean, as far as, can we require a CUP if a certain amount of the members in that home that are disabled are sex offenders, can we require a CUP?
If it was a group home for sex offenders, you could.
So it's, but if it's a group home for recovering.
Alcoholics.
For sex offenders that are substance abusers, they could, they could fall in under the substance abuse.
Yeah, that, that's what I find hard to, I mean, that's what I.
I think we would need to talk to the, to Oxford House and some of these other groups about that. I don't think that happens, but I, I can't honestly tell you.
Well, then, uh, the, the, the woman that I spoke with, um, she said that there's a, a house right behind her house. Um, she said there was no notification and that it's a group home for sex offenders. And so if they're required to have a CUP, um, obviously there would have been notification.
Yes, if they're, they could be there, yeah.
So, um, it, it's concerning.
And we will, we will.
If it's less, if it's four or less, though, they don't.
They're fine.
Only if there's over four of them, correct? So even if it's less, so if it's four or less sex offenders, they're still okay because it's the familial definition?
Yes, but they're not related, four unrelated adults.
And in that neighborhood, Ben, it's not going to be an over four bedroomed house.
Good, Barbara?
Well, our family definition is four. And these, a lot of families, probably the majority of families are, you know, around four or less and that kind of thing. But these group homes seem to have larger numbers, like this Oxford House is six or more. I mean, is there an upper limit? And, you know, uh, these, these, or the other group homes seem to be eight. Uh, and I'm, I'm thinking in terms of the capacity, the housing capacity in most neighborhoods, you know, is not really that great. Is it, I can see if there are some of these group homes that are maybe managed by an agency. They have certain inspections and require a certain square footage per person or, but what, what about these others? I mean, are they, what kind of inspections are there or?
Well, there, there is a requirement, there is a per-person square footage requirement in the Uniform Statewide Building Code under property mates. And that would, that would put a cap on how many? Yes, ma'am?
So we can't, we can't impose particular requirements, but they come under something like that housing.
That is, that, that particular requirement is specifically exempted under the ADA. You can require that they meet that standard.
But then, in, in some of these, I guess, particularly if the Oxford House is self-supporting, then that probably means that these people work and maybe have cars and then you, do you get into parking situations? We have no oversight or things like that?
No, ma'am.
All right, well, okay.
If I could just, uh, quick capstone, I really appreciate this. I think it's helpful and I think if we put it on disc and get it out, it'll be helpful to any of, you know, the people that want to know. I just think if we can find some way, and this is far more complex issue. I know, you know, we have a lot of laws overseeing, you know, our direction. But if we can facilitate some communication when these type of, you know, group homes come into the neighborhood to build bridges with the neighbors. But also, you know, if you have sex offenders and convicted felons, is there anything that we might be able to do as a city to give assurances for oversight? You know, in other words, if you even have a group's home, who's watching them? Who's responsible? And, um, you know, and also to work with the police department to give assurances to the neighbors that, you know, that they're safe and they're under thing. I, I, this is a tough one, but I appreciate the efforts.
Good, thank, any other questions or comments? Kay, we certainly do thank you for taking the time. It's, uh, before we move forward, Mr. City Attorney, is your presentation concluded?
Yes, sir. Your sermon stood wonderful.
Okay, where's Phil Pullman? Here he comes.
Did a great job, Mark.
Phil Pullman's going to give us the current status of roadway funding. You don't mind if I go ahead, do you, Mr. Sporing, call on him?
I wish you would, Mayor. Well, Mark fell in.
Yes, sir. He's turning red. Does this work? Oh, it does work. Good afternoon, Mayor and, uh, members of council. Um, today I'm going to discuss the current state of transportation funding and its impacts on the roadway CIP. Three points I'm going to make today that, uh, hopefully you leave with is, number one, state and federal transportation funding is down. It is down and it's not likely to increase in the near future. Number two, what little funding there is, is now distributed completely on a competitive basis, whereas before it was distributed more on a guaranteed formula-based distribution. And number three is the city has way more, um, needs than there is funding. So I'm going to discuss the historical funding the city has received and programmed in the roadway CIP. I'm going to discuss, uh, new state legislation and its effects on our program. Um, and then what this means moving forward and finally conclusions and discussion. As we've indicated in past presentations, the funding we used to receive from the state beginning back in the late eighties called urban formula funding, went to zero in FY eleven, as you can see here. FY ten was the last year that we received funding. As you can see, for the seven-year period shown here from oh-four to ten, we averaged receipt of approximately sixteen and a half million dollars a year. So it was a healthy amount of funding we got, but now that is zero. The city funding, um, for the thirteen-year period shown from oh-four till current FY sixteen, uh, the council has provided, uh, funding of approximately thirty-one million dollars a year for the roadway CIP. Uh, now this does not include funding for any special projects, large projects, um, uh, any one-time events. So this thirty-one million dollars is a good representation of the amount of city funding going towards the base roadway program. Now, COF, uh, this is what we've termed competitively obtained funding. You've heard us use that before. It's primarily federal funding. Uh, and we've received, uh, we've been very successful in obtaining this over the years. Uh, this chart shows, uh, the COF that we received from all sources in that thirteen-year window and it totals approximately five point four million dollars per year. Uh, the final source of, uh, funding that we've been successful in receiving is revenue sharing. Now, I broke this out separate because it's becoming a large, significant funding stream for the city. Um, it's a state funding source that began in two thousand and six. Uh, requires a fifty-fifty match from the locality and the state. And in FY thirteen, you can see levels were increased to ten million dollars. So we've received ten million dollars from FY thirteen through sixteen and we have applications in for seventeen. So if you average that over the period we received, it, it amounts to four and a half million dollars a year. All right, two other significant sources of funding in our program that have happened over the last few years are one-time sources. Let me reemphasize that, just one-time sources. The President Obama's two thousand and nine ARA Act and Governor McDonald's two thousand and eleven GTP funding. Now, what did we fund with that? In two thousand and nine, um, now we'll point out that these two one-time sources were competitive and the city was very successful based on us having shovel-ready projects. So we were very fortunate to be able to be in a position to do that. We received thirty-nine million dollars in the ARA, uh, from the ARA funds and we completed Princess Anne Road Phase Four, Witch Duck Road Phase One and the Great Neck Ramps. Now for the GTP, we received a hundred and fifty-six million dollars. And we, we, uh, we got that funding for Holland Road, Lesnar Bridge and Lynn Haven Parkway, all three which are under construction now. And the fourth one, Witch Duck Road Phase Two, which will go to construction, uh, early to mid next year. Okay, if we total all the COF that we receive, plus the revenue sharing, plus the one-time funding sources, it totals approximately three hundred and fifteen million dollars over that thirteen-year period. Uh, I'll point out that the GTP and the ARA, the one-time funds, uh, they make up almost half of that. So if you took those out, it would be about half of that. Now, to show what that looks like, uh, on a bar chart, I think you can kind of visually see, uh, there's the city funding that I just talked about. There's the COF funding, the competitively obtained funding, federal grants. Basically, we add that, what we've received from oh-four to sixteen. There's the urban funding, you can see it went away after twenty-ten. And the average of that is about forty-nine million dollars a year. Now, if we add the two one-time sources, ARR A and GTP, the average goes to about sixty-four million dollars a year. Um, going forward from FY seventeen on, the average funding will, is, is, has got to decrease due to the urban funding going down to zero and the uncertainty of the COF. Now, um, three house bills, um, were passed over the last three years related to transportation funding that affect the city of Virginia Beach. The first one, House Bill twenty-three thirteen, it was passed in twenty-thirteen. It increased funding levels by generating additional taxes and fees across the state. So that's key. This one did increase funding levels. Additionally, it allowed for sales taxes in two areas, Hampton Roads in Northern Virginia, to go towards projects in those specific areas. In Hampton Roads, the funding was put in the newly created Hampton Roads Trust Fund and goes one-hundred percent towards regional projects. In Northern Virginia, funding was put in the already created Northern Virginia Transportation Authority Fund and they set it up so that their funding is split. Thirty percent goes to the member localities for local projects, seventy percent for regional funds. Those are the differences between the two. Now again, House Bill twenty-three thirteen, right now, HRTF is currently generating about two hundred million a year. I think Bob told me the new refined numbers are about a hundred and seventy million a year. Um, but again, all the funding goes towards regional projects, no money going to the locals. So what are those regional projects? Um, HR TAC was formed. Our mayor is, um, chairman of that currently. And five, they identified five projects to pursue with the funding that they're going to collect from the sales and fees. Um, those projects are the I-sixty-four Peninsula Widening, the I-sixty-four South Side Widening, I-sixty-four-two-sixty-four Interchange, which is partially in Virginia Beach, the US four-sixty-fifty-eight-thirteen Connector and the Hampton Roads Third Crossing. And I just so happen to have maps for those. First, we have the I-sixty-four Peninsula Widening, broken into three segments, as you can see, hopefully on your maps that are in color. Uh, fourth segment is the Fort Eustis Interchange there. So it's basically consists of four projects. Um, the I-sixty-four, uh, two-sixty-four Interchange, which includes improvements in Virginia Beach, including the Greenwich Flyover, that's shown on this map. Um, the I-sixty-four South Side Widening, that also includes the High Rise Bridge in Chesapeake and then the US Route four-sixty-fifty-eight-thirteen Connector. And lastly, you've all heard the Hampton Roads Third Crossing. This map shows that and the components of it, which are Patriots Crossing, I-six-sixty-four Widening and Crane Island Connector. All three of those make up what we call the Hampton Roads Third Crossing. Now, House Bill eighteen-eighty-seven, this was the second bill I was going to talk about. It was approved in twenty-fifteen. This bill adds no new funding, uh, no additional revenue. So that's the key here, no additional revenues. What it does, it replaces the old guaranteed formula funding that I mentioned earlier with a new formula. And what is that new formula? This here. This formula, uh, is forty-five, twenty-seven and a half, twenty-seven and a half. Forty-five percent goes to what they call state of good repair, which is maintenance projects, repaving projects, uh, bridge maintenance. It's, it's, it's highly, mostly maintenance. Twenty-seven and a half goes to what they call high priority projects statewide. And the third pot is twenty-seven and a half towards highway construction district. That's basically the local VDOT district. So we're in the Hampton Roads district, so that would be projects that we would submit for them. Um, the last two categories, the high priority projects and the construction district projects are subject to House Bill two, which is essentially a competitive process, as I mentioned earlier. I'll discuss that in a minute. The new formula goes into effect in FY twenty-one, however, VDOT has begun transition now. The expected amount of six-year funding going towards these two programs is five hundred million for the high priority projects, the, the middle arrow, and a hundred million for the construction district. That's over six years. So as you can see, that's, that's very limited funding, well, fund, limited funding we'll be competing for. Um, now what is House Bill two? House Bill two was passed in twenty-fourteen by the state and it includes a complex scoring system to evaluate and rank projects across the state. It's a data-driven process being used to score projects submitted for those two pots of money that I just mentioned. It's highly weighted towards project addressing congestion. Repeat that again, highly weighted towards projects addressing congestion. Um, it's being used for this upcoming FY seventeen SIP, VDOT SIP. Um, so again, under the old formula funding, money was guaranteed. Under this new process, funding is not guaranteed. We have to compete. And what did we do? Applications were due on September thirtieth. We submitted these four projects. They are Centerville Three, Indian River Seven A, Alaskan Road Bridge Replacement and Elbow Road Phase Two B. Now, you might ask why we submitted those projects. We had a whole list, a whole cadre of projects that we could have submitted, but our staff got together and, um, we actually put together an internal scoring system that matched what the, the state had. And what fell out of that was we, these four projects we think are going to compete the best. Um, like I say, applications were due on September thirtieth. The process is closed and just the other day, VDOT reported that in the high priority projects statewide, they received three hundred and twenty-one applications worth seven billion dollars worth of projects. That's seven billion dollars worth of projects for that five hundred million dollars over six years. And the construction district grant pot that I mentioned, um, they received forty-five applications for one point eight billion dollars. That was for the hundred million over six years. So hopefully you can see those numbers. It's a, uh, slim chance to get a project. Hopefully we can, we can score well, but we'll just have to wait and see how it scores.
What's the SIP?
The SIP is VDOT's Six-Year, uh, Six-Year Improvement Plan, our corollary to our CIP.
All right, thank you.
Um, now, what does this mean towards, for our CIP? Okay, I wanted to run through our CIP real quick. Here is our current twenty-six, in our current CIP, twenty-six fully funded projects at a total project cost of eight hundred and fourteen million. Um, we are moving out expeditiously on these projects and, um, like I said, they're fully funded. So that's the good news. Now here are eleven projects that have a balance to complete. That means they're not fully funded, they're in some phase needing money, uh, to, to, to finish. Two hundred and eighty-one million dollars. That's eleven projects in current CIP, not fully funded, two hundred and eighty-one million dollars of balance. So what we said was, how long is it going to take us to, um, to complete those projects? If we could just put the limited amount of. if we could just put the limited amount of money we know we're going to get towards them? And what did we come up with? We said, okay, if we apply $41 million a year to that $281 million, how long will it take us to finish? And we get seven years. Now, you might ask, where do we come up with 41 million dollars? $41 million was the $31 million that we have been averaging of local funds that the council has put towards the CIP, and we assume that we're going to get $10 million of revenue sharing. It's a little bit of a leap because that's competitive, I don't know if they're going to have it every year, but if we total it up, $41 million, $281 million, in seven years, we can complete the current CIP. Now, that's not all the projects we have. We have over 50 projects in a backlog, we call these our backlog, these are needs that the city has. This is over almost $2 billion of needs that the city has in large congestion and safety projects. So, let's apply the same formula there, how long would it take us to finish these with the limited amount of money?
I don't want to see that answer.
And this is, I probably won't be around, but it's 45 years, 46 years. Again, same methodology, just to give you a order of magnitude, rule of thumb, you know, where we're headed with the limited amount of money we had, what it would take. So, what does all that mean? The conclusions here, and I have several, but a few I wanted to highlight. Federal and state funding is low, primarily because there's no long-term federal transportation bill, as Bob and I and the manager have talked. Transportation funding has gone from guaranteed to competitive, which means we could strike out completely. We could, bad year, bad projects, not, not competing projects, we could get no money.
But, but, I don't mean to interrupt you.
Yes, sir.
But, that's not our style. We're always prepared and ready to go, and we can make our case pretty strongly, can't we?
Yes, sir, which is bullet number five, getting projects shovel-ready.
I didn't mean to interrupt, but I mean, we think, we got to go in there and fight for every damn penny we can get.
That, that's a good point, Mr. Mayor, and that's bullet number five. Having projects shovel-ready is very important, that's how we competed so well in ARA and GTP. And with the money we have, we are still gearing projects up, preliminary engineering, so I consider we have several projects shovel-ready now.
We just got some money because the other states weren't ready for it, and they just got some, the statewide got, was $155 million extra.
Yeah, there was some, there was some money that went mostly towards paving and...
But, it's because the other states weren't ready for it.
They are ready, it's going to be a debit against our account.
Yeah, they, they do that every year.
I don't mean to interrupt you.
No, two more points, and then we'll open up to questions. Revenue share funds are a major source for the city. These are $10 million. Somebody at VDOT told me a couple of years ago, basically that's our new urban money. But, it's not guaranteed anymore, it's competitive, so every year they change the rules, how you get it. We've been lucky to get $10 million every year, we need to continue to at least match $10 million. We're one of the only localities in the state that, out of like three, that, I think there's three that get that $10 million. The others don't put up that $10 million to get it. We have a large backlog of projects that I showed you. It's not all doom and gloom, they're still funding in our CIP to address safety issues, minor, minor safety issues, maintenance issues, so we still have that amount of money to do that. And lastly, we will continue, as Mr. Mayor said, to aggressively pursue COFF and other sources of funding that become available. So, that's it. Discussion.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Questions or comments, please?
One observation, and then just two comments. My, my comment first. I encourage everyone to talk with their members of the congressional and senatorial thing as we, we look at reauthorization, what they call MAP 21, or whatever they call it, but a significant portion of the gas tax gets diverted to transit, which is not delivering on congestion relief. And I really do believe that transit, since it is not a user fee, should, the Congress should find out its own source of money to fund and subsidize transit as they see fit. But, all gas taxes that are collected should be used for roads, and about 25% of it is not. Pays for museums, it pays for lots of stuff, but just to give you an example about congestion. My other observation is, maybe not this year, but I think we are, and I said, mentioned this before at our retreats, that we need to be thinking about a referendum on roads just to find out how much of this balance to complete and whatever it is, you know, because it is something that people can use every single day. And, and I think if I hear one thing from public, I said, why we always have money for everything, but we can never have money for roads? I mean, I'm sure I'm not the only one that hears that. And I think it's a big deficit that adds most to the quality of life every day because it gives people back what? Time. Unfortunately, God only gives us so much time, and you can't inflate time. So, those are issues, and despite what we think, the money, another debate of the day, what we're spending on transit is not delivering people time, and is not delivering this congestion relief. We need to focus, and I, and I think we can show a good case on competition. I hope we're going to be able to bring some of that stuff we're doing to ODU and that modeling to bring another level of sophistication that other communities aren't, to really demonstrate what we give back to the, to the person in terms of time reduction and congestion relief. And I hope we can give them some visualization and not just a narrative, so that people can see in a simulation thing what that investment would bring. I hope we're planning to do that, because I think that is the key, is to not only just have the narrative, but be able to explain it in a way that people can see and visualize it and say, wow, these are the people that can deliver that project, and we know what we're going to get because we can see the validated numbers, but we can visually see the relief that it would provide. So, I hope we're doing that. Thank you very much.
Barbara?
Well, I'm looking at, at these lists, and it's some of the roads that are not on here, you know, so this is far from complete.
There's a second backlog.
I don't see Southeastern Expressway on here anywhere. And, and one of my neighborhoods have been being told that a particular road can be built with state money if they only get behind their councilperson to do it, and I don't see that on here either. It, it just seems to be, I guess this is, these backlog projects are very subject to change and so forth, but when we're looking at these really large numbers for the transportation system, and of course, this is all just pretty much construction, it's not maintenance. Somehow or other, I think that, that the total thing of transportation, because, you know, we talked about transportation and, you know, many different aspects, transportation is getting people from one place to another. And, and then, particularly if you're going to buy a car, I think it has to include where you're going to park that sucker when you get there, so that all needs, is it, do we have any total funding for what a transportation plan is, is going to cost? Are we getting anything close to that, you know, with some of these modeling things that are being done and we're going to be having available soon?
We're working on that. I mean, there's a lot of efforts going on, as you mentioned, the modeling with the Southeastern, also the modeling that we're, we're doing with the comp plan that's, that's rolling out to see, you know, see, see about prioritizing some of these projects. And you're right, Ms. Henry, there's some projects that were left off of here. Primarily, this is based on the current CIP, we're right in the process of reevaluating that now. I know exactly what project you're talking about that's not on here, and I've been asked to put it in, so we will see how that goes.
Asked by whom? Not by me. I mean, because I, I think we have to kind of do things prioritized, and certainly publicly when we ask something like that. So, who asked you to put it in?
Well, executive level.
You create a CIP, it's still unfunded, Ms. Henry, but...
Well, I know, but I mean, I, I think, you know, I'm, I'm looking at these other parts that are just not, not here and so forth as well, and, okay.
Well, if I can just comment, you know, we have a, and we're updating right now as part of the comprehensive plan, the master street and highway plan and the, and the transit plan, and it's, you know, safe to say, we're not going to have enough funding, I think, to, to implement that plan in any short period of time. That looks out 20, 25 years in terms of what are the eventual improvements that would be needed, and then it's up to council every year to set those priorities when you review the, the CIP. We are right now taking a look at the CIP, and I think with the slow growth in revenues that we're seeing, we're not going to be able to, to meet the program that Phil's just very excellently described, and we're going to have to make some cuts there in the CIP as one way of perhaps balancing those needs.
If I might, just to pile on, if you go to the next chart, please, you know, we, we keep this list for the next chart, that's a balance to complete. We, we put that project up, one more. That's 50 projects that, that we're just tracking when, when, when we hear an outcry from, from a civic league, or there's, there's, we don't have a CIP currently built, we build that, try to get a cost estimate and just add it to the list. As, as a council, we can add anything you want, and, and we keep that running total, but all we're doing is building...
I think it's, I think it's safe to say that we have the most aggressive and most successful local transportation funding program anybody in the Commonwealth. There's not even anybody even close. What I'm, what I'm saying is, unless revenues really start picking up, we're going to have to, we're going to have to back off the accelerator on that to balance the budget.
Well, I think we've got to watch what we promise people. I mean, we really have to be careful what we go out and promise people, because that can get us in a whole heap of trouble.
That's proven to be factual over the years.
Being careful what we promise people?
I think that's what I'm talking about.
I would not argue that for a half a second. But, you know, is there any other questions or comments?
The thing is, I want to applaud this council for what we've done in the past, I think Jim was, you know, spot on when he said, you know, we've done a heck of a lot. But, you know, you can sit here, like, at the regional, the projects you just saw, and we are, we aren't hitting the $200 million, you know, because gas prices went down. We're hitting, you know, the $150 to $170 million. But, guess what? It's not close to enough to do what needs to be done with those five projects that you just saw. Plain and simple. And, so, you know, we're, we got to, as a city and as a region, we've got to really focus in on how we're going to prioritize, number one, and then figure out how we're going to pay for it. But, uh, but we'll, I know we got some keen minds, and we'll, we'll figure it out. Phil, we thank you so very much. Okey-dokey.
Why don't you do the introduction on this one, Mayor?
Be glad, thank you. You know, city manager's a whole lot better about this than the city attorney. We have the great Warren Harris walking in the door. He's in the building, and we're going to have the Happen to Roads Economic Development Alliance update that Warren has been working diligently on. And we welcome you, sir.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager. Several months ago, I think we collectively agreed that we had a, a joint displeasure in the direction that our Regional Economic Development Organization was heading, and you asked me and, and I solicited the support of our regional colleagues to do what I would suggest, or at least I would call it a reset of the organization. I think we all agreed, and I say all collectively, that the organization was not meeting our, our expectations, and once we started that discussion, lo and behold, we found out that other communities felt the same, they just were not willing to take the leadership role to make something happen. Well, we, we took that direction from you all and took the lead to go ahead and start a process of going through a, a complete reexamination of that organization and start a process of making it in our best guesstimate, and our, and I think you'll see some improvements a way in which to make it a much more meaningful, much more effective organization, really providing that value-added proposition that it's, it's intended to, to do. So, I want to walk you through a couple of components here of the process that we've gone through, somewhat slow but necessary, and also share with you some of the significant changes that have occurred during this reset period. We actually started prior to '15, but, 2015, but during this, this, this calendar year, they've had a, a change in leadership. Darryl Gosnell is no longer the CEO of the organization. Back in February, we started in earnest with our other public sector partners, looking at a strategic reset of its mission, and had working committees created. In March of this year, Kevin Sweeney, retired admiral, came in and, and began to serve the organization in a, in an interim role. In July, the, a couple of our counties and cities on the peninsula, Gloucester, James City County, Williamsburg, and York County decided to not renew their membership into the alliance, they felt for, for their purposes, to create more of a historic triangle organization, where they really leveraged some of the colonial historic aspects of their communities was a much better fit for them in terms of their economic development strategy. And so, they decided to, to reestablish themselves in a, in a separate organization. So, that dropped the membership down to its current membership of 11 communities, and then just this past month, we had the significant action needed and taken, making some substantial changes to the bylaws and its organization, which I'll share with you here shortly. Break down the issues that we all had concerns about and which we, we pointedly and very directly addressed, the leadership of the organization, there's no doubt that you all shared your concerns about that, its strategic purpose, the organizational structure, the lack of research, research support that we were receiving, that's certainly necessary from a regional organization like this to various investor groups, and of course, the funding model. And let's just walk you through those. From a leadership standpoint, as I mentioned, they're in an interim status right now with, with Kevin Sweeney, serving as interim president and CEO. The search committee has been formed, we have created a, a new job description for the, for that position. We've also hired an executive firm, DHR, to begin that national search. We have just finished rewriting the organizational profile, if you will, of what the ideal candidate should look like and the qualities and experience that he or she should have. We're hoping that within the first quarter of next year, the, the question with regard to permanent leadership will be resolved, and a new president and CEO will be in place. From a mission statement standpoint, we did a substantial re-evaluation of the role of, of the alliance. We've added and changed and revised some of the language to be more reflective of what the concurrent issues are within economic development, and as we've talked before in the past, one of the key elements and components of economic development today is not so much taxes and land, but it's really talent and your ability to, to demonstrate that that talent exists within your market. So, we wanted to make sure that's more reflective and a part of their support and mission, making sure that they respond to existing industries at, at the direction of the localities to support existing market. As you know, growth in a community, 80% of that, up to maybe 90 now, is coming from your existing industry sector, so they could and should assist the localities in a much stronger way in terms of supporting us and supporting our ability to grow our existing market. Of course, diversification is something that's not new to the council, something that's certainly important to us from an economic development strategy standpoint, and that they needed to update and become more current in terms of their target industry sectors, sectors that are looking to again bring, you know, the value-added proposition to our region, not necessarily just do the same, you know, humming along with what we have, but what is it that we can do to bring an added, value-added proposition to our economic, economic base? And finally, making sure that it, that it reflects and talks about sophisticated research. When we look at this area, you know, we felt, you know, that entity, that organization can certainly, you know, produce what I would call a Moody's Investor Report, you know, something on a, on a regular basis, that's significant, that, that really goes in, in depth in terms of showing and demonstrating analysis and data with regard to everything economic development with, about certain areas and certain topics within economic development. From an organizational structure, this is where I think we've made some subs- From an organizational structure, this is where I think we've made some substantial modifications and changes within their bylaws and structure. Class C directors, these are non-voting members. It's certainly in our regional best interest and their best interest that we start bringing in other regional organizations into this discussion, you know, about economic development. So we're gonna make sure that there is a representation from other regional organizations, such as the chambers on both sides of the water, the Peninsula Chamber, as well as the Hampton Roads Chamber. There are two workforce development investment boards. There's the Peninsula Workforce Council for Workforce Development. There is the OP, Inc., which is the South Side. So those organizations also needing to be brought into a much greater relationship with the process. And also HARMFA, which is our Military and Federal Facilities Alliance. From the standpoint, and this is where again, there is not, in our opinion, enough public sector input. And in many ways, if there had been, some of the directional issues that we had with the direction of the alliance could have been addressed much sooner than they were to have a representation on the compensation committee. In other words, as you see there, making sure that this committee has not only the private representation, but also now there will be two members of the public sector on that committee to ensure that the performance of the leadership is at the status and at a level in which it's meeting the objectives of the public sector communities. On the executive committee, we've made substantial, again, an amendment to the bylaws whereby not only will each community have representation and vote from a public sector standpoint, but as a fiscal presence or seats on that committee, it not only includes our mayor, our city manager, but also, for continuity, also the economic development directors of the communities. From an officer's standpoint, a very substantial change here as well.
Why isn't we don't have weighted voting? Do we have weighted voting?
No, there is not. There is a weighted membership of board members by locality. We have a greater number of board members that sit on the authority, on the alliance, but it doesn't translate into a weighted voting.
And the board members don't each get one vote?
Correct. One community gets, yeah. From an officer's standpoint, this is another major change. Up until this point, a public sector representative could not necessarily be an officer of the alliance. Well, now that could be a possibility where, as a part of the executive committee or any member of the board on a public sector, from the public sector, can now also serve in a officer position of the organization. And as it states there, obviously, these were critical changes that we thought needed to be met because of the lack of input that the public sector was really able to have with the specifics, directions of the alliance and in a leadership role. Research, again, a critical piece to economic development, a critical piece that was lacking coming out of the organization, something that certainly needed to be improved on. We put a lot of emphasis and focus into this area. And so now we have made sure that we've elevated the importance of research in, as a component part of the alliance, making sure that there's a senior-level position with specific duties outlined within that job description that will produce the type and the quality and the quantity of information that's necessary, we feel, for both public and private sector investors, to make sure, again, there's a value-added proposition related to the functions and support of the alliance. From a funding standpoint, the funding model, we have a new funding model will be established and it may not necessarily be based on a per capita basis. We're looking at a membership dues scenario. A subcommittee has been established to really look at this part of the program in depth whereby, once the new president and CEO has come on board, to make sure, again, we, you know, we review how localities are funding the organization and at that point, make a final recommendation of how, from a public sector standpoint, the funding of the organization should go forward. So there are a couple of remaining issues. I don't think they're necessarily substantial, but there are some out there that we needed to make sure you were aware of. And of course, it's the hiring of the new president and CEO. It's the implementation of that new research strategy, the creation of the new funding model, and the making sure that we establish a new performance measures as to, you know, what constitutes success and meeting the expectations of the communities and the investors. So where we are at this point, we are comfortable from a staff recommendation as a part of this year's funding to go forward and continue to fund the alliance, understanding that they've made these substantial changes and modifications to their program. And of course, you know, we would, you know, finish up these last remaining issues that we would certainly bring back to council at the time at which they're completing, which we're anticipating the first quarter of next year. But I can say the organization is listening, finally. I can say that there has been some substantial modifications to the way they're doing business. And I can say that now there's a much greater involvement and engagement by the public sector into the specific operation decision-making level of the organization going forward. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a number of questions on this, Warren.
Sure.
Appreciate the presentation and I, there's a couple of things in here I like and there's a few things I have questions about.
Sure.
First off, going to the funding issue, your very last slide there with the $426,000, it appears that that is still under the old model, contrary to slide number nine, which says there's gonna be a new model. So they're still billing us under the old model.
Yeah, we're still operating under, you know, we adopted this in July of this year. So we wanted to get through this current fiscal year under the current business model. But they recognize and we recognize that going forward in your upcoming budget, that that model is not gonna be the same. And there were some, there are a number of recommendations floating. And until we get consensus and final, I don't want to just speculate on what they're gonna be, but I can tell you, we will not be paying that much going forward.
Well, from my opinion, if we're paying that amount to most of anybody, then we should have weighted voting. That just makes sense to me. The, so there's now 11 communities?
Yes.
So you've got the seven major cities. Who are the other four?
It'll be Pecosin, Olive White, Southampton, Franklin.
Okay, because, I mean, traditionally, those smaller communities get a lot more bang for their buck because they pay very little and they get one deal in and that covers their investment for years.
Well, to your point, again, the focus was low-hanging fruit of the alliance. I mean, the warehouse distribution model is not gonna work in Virginia Beach.
Which kind of brings it back to the whole question that I have. It would seem to me, I understand getting rid of the Colonial Triangle group.
Sure, sure.
Leaving. It would seem to me that probably it should be just the seven cities and they should probably get rid of those other ones because frankly, they don't bring a whole lot to the table, whereas the cities tend to have the same kind of needs and abilities.
It's a good point.
But then the question is, going back to the four that left, or the three that left, so they're no longer marketing those areas?
Correct.
So even if there's a private sector entity that's headquartered in Gloucester, Williamsburg, James City County, they're not gonna market in those areas?
That's correct.
And let's see.
Let me ask you, and some of that that you're asked could very well get flushed out in that funding model. I mean, you know, granted, I think, you know, there's some merit to look at a per capita relationship. One of the things that we have asked is to maybe look at it from another standpoint. What does it take to operate this organization effectively? And then back into a number from that standpoint. And so that's why we don't, I don't want to, I do know for a fact, though, going forward in this upcoming budget, that discussion will not be at 426 for us. It's certainly gonna be less than that.
Well, the research thing impresses me the most out of all this.
Yeah, it was a substantial weakness on their part, yeah.
Done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, John Lawson, then Louis.
This is a good presentation, but as I always say, it would be much better for us if I had received it in advance. So I could give it, I did not come in my package in advance. It came to other people's homes. It didn't come to mine.
No, it wasn't sent out Friday.
But my point is, you're looking for feedback. I think you deserve feedback. It deserves a discerning look. Your presentation was great, but doesn't give the time for reflection to give the feedback you like. And I think I respect our time, and I've said it again and again and again, we should receive these briefings before we come here. I know I've said it in writing. I know I've said it verbally. It hasn't happened. It's disrespectful to our time. But that being said, I am concerned about the resource piece because of this. We have tremendous research taking place at ODU. We have a good set of economists at HPRDC. So I'm really wondering why we're gonna yet again try to create another critical mass of scarce talent to start with, looking. So I'm hoping when they come back, this thoughtful process, we should be leveraging and improving the customer and client base for that existing academic expertise doing practical research to leverage that so we even get better, higher-quality products, because there's a lot of data to massage. And that goes with a lot of experience. And so I hope.
I think that's in their intent. That's part of the expectation that they would. Yeah, there is a research VP, but it's that expectation of that individual to pull those resources that you just described. But to be a little bit more parochial, I want it sent to me in terms of economic development.
Right. And all that's economic. I know they do proprietary work.
Sure.
The other piece, I would like to see the bylaws that have actually, are being adopted. I'd like to see what those are. If we can be provided a copy of that, so I know what it is. I concur with Jim. If we're going to a new model, then we should be paying even now the new model rate, in my personal view, and not 426.55. I don't understand that. Given your Class C stockholders, and I forget which slide that was, but if we don't have the presidents or the equivalent, maybe it's the dean of economics or the dean of something at one of our local, our largest universities in that kind of business, I think you're missing a key person as well as the local regional president for TCC because they're big on workforce development. I think there are people that should be on this new Class C of directors.
Yeah, these are new. They're already on.
Okay, okay. You just said this is, but if people aren't, I guess the thing I see here is it's unfortunate. The biggest contributor should not be the public sector. If this is delivering, then the people who should be paying the most should be.
61% of the care funding is coming from the public sector.
And the business community should be the voting members and we should be the non-voting members. This is the reverse of what you would want to have because they're the people that are out there working in the real world, are delivering and can't confiscate revenues and have to earn it. So that's a different perspective. You're trying to grow business. They've done it. So I would like to see less, maybe these chamber things, and go out and pick the people of actual businesses that represent the businesses you're trying to attract and the areas we're trying to attract, to be those Class C directors rather than just the chamber as a whole in terms of the network and stuff that they might have. Those are my observations. But I would like to get a copy of this electronically as well and a copy of the bylaws, so I could put my more thoughtful, discerning judgment and share that with you. Thank you.
Louis?
Who's on the search committee?
John Pageant is the chair of the search committee. I'm on the search committee. Skip Smith from WM Jordan, Charity Voltry from Sun Trust, Florence Kingston from Newport News, Christian Kostler from Steel. And I may be missing someone else or so, but that's the makeup of the search committee.
We just went through the search for the Planning District Commission.
Mm-hmm.
And we had a couple of pretty aggressive people who did not get the appointment to the Planning District Commission. But, and one of them in particular, I think, would be ideal for this particular job, so I'd like to talk to you about it.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. We want to get the largest cast of talent that's possible.
I mean, if this thing's gonna work, and it hadn't worked in the past, quite frankly, if this thing's gonna work, it's gonna take somebody with a lot of imagination and a lot of energy and a lot of commitment to the process. And I gotta tell you, I'm skeptical. But I would like to make a suggestion to you.
Be happy to, yeah, absolutely.
Well, this is probably a little bit off the point in talking just specifically about this organization. But hearing the state of the region report last week, and it was very similar to what Mr. Score had given to us a couple of months ago, this place that Hampton Roads as a region holds in comparison to other large regions, even just on the East Coast, as is shown here, as dead last, and not just dead last, but bad last. What is being done to try to overcome that? I mean, is this organization supposed to be doing something? Or is there anybody, any entity, that's really looking at this fact of how badly performing Hampton Roads is and saying, well, what are these things? What's wrong? And trying to make some real aggressive counter of all of this? Because I can just see things not looking very bright in the future if we don't do something.
Well, a couple of things. One, we're taking control of our own destiny. That's one. Two, I don't think there's any one organization that has that responsibility. I think we're trying to get multiple entities to do and address that question. You know, we're seeing a much greater involvement by the Hampton Roads Community Foundation in answering that question. We're looking at, again, bolstering this organization. I think the mayors and chairs are looking at it. So I don't know if it rests, quite frankly, in any one organization's responsibility other than that we need to collectively get on the same, you know, road, I was gonna say track, but road, to, you know, to address the issue collectively. Because, you know, the strength of Virginia Beach, and I'm gonna speak a little selfishly, we can't carry the entire region. And I can separate out Virginia Beach's performance and actually show it up against other communities in the Commonwealth. And I think you would be very impressed with what Virginia Beach is doing. But when you look at us regionally, as a regional, and we all feed off each other, then that's a separate issue. So, you know, I don't know if I answered your question specifically, but I think it just takes, this is not gonna be the answer to it all, but it's one subset, I gotta say, of helping us get there.
Go ahead, Jim.
Well, I just wanted, I don't know if there's any more questions, but this is a really important project. But I just wanted to recognize Warren's leadership on this. He's really mobilized the region. This conversation would not have happened but for his efforts. And it's been a long, drawn-out process this past year and a half, but I think we're seeing some results at this point.
In the last five years, what have we gotten for our money?
Well, I mean.
Have we gotten any projects in the last five years?
Yes. There is one and they would claim two. So, I mean, that's a weak performance. I mean.
Which ones did we get?
It was, they would say, we would say collectively, Halat, which is a French company that's there. And then they would say Proofrex. This past year, we had, we just looked at, this past calendar year, they had 20 inquiries that had some remote possibility for Virginia Beach to have. But I would say of that 20, probably only five would be within our target industry sector.
It's still a little troubling to me.
It is.
We are the biggest contributor to the organization and we don't have weighted voting. And, I mean, and I appreciate what you've done. Please don't think that this is any reflection of you. You've done really, but it really.
I love being the bad guy with these guys, so they don't like.
We don't have any voting. We're paying the lion's share and we've gotten so little in return. It just really.
And it's not any, again, not too, almost too. And it's, it's, it's not any, again, not, not to, almost to Ms. Henley's question, it's not any one thing. It was certainly a leadership failure, and a reaction, or a lack of reaction on their part to address it when we first brought it to their attention. I mean, this is not new, as you all well know. We brought this to their attention three years ago, four years ago, and they failed to act. And so, one of the most important pieces, we wanted to make sure there was a change here, is that the public sector had a much greater role in some of that critical decision-making, so it can respond quicker than they have in the past.
I just wanted to mention, because it really brings up a good point, I think the recently completed Old Dominion study showed that even though a company may not locate in Virginia Beach, we'd get a lot of the benefit in terms of people moving here, living here, shopping here, and so on and so forth. So it really is, it's a regional economy, and because of land costs and land availability in the beach, there's a lot of economic activity that we're not going to be able to get. And we've, you know, Warren has religiously tried to target our efforts on the kinds of things that we think we'd be successful on, and we need to get them to do the same thing for us.
But not having the weighted voting is probably bothers me. But if the funding is fixed to be equal, then that, would that be satisfactory to you, or...
Yeah, but we don't know if it's going to be fixed, or if it's not. I mean, they want $100,000, some $1,000 from us this year.
Jim, David, you have one?
Yeah, just to follow up on what Jim said, and I agree with you about the regional economy aspect of it, but I think also, that kind of goes back to my argument, that we need to focus, or this organization should focus on the seven cities, as opposed to the outlying ones, because again, people, you know, maybe they're going to, they're going to locate a business in Southampton County, but I sincerely doubt people are going to commute every day from Virginia Beach to Southampton County, and I don't know that we're going to get a whole lot of business out of that. And really, you know, until we do something with 64 going across the water, you know, we're not having a whole lot of people coming across from the peninsula, unless they're forced to go there. So, you know, I just, I kind of think that if we focus on cities and localities that are, that are similar to us, that, where we cross-pollinate, because as you keep, people don't care if they're crossing the border to go shopping, or go to the doctor's office, or whatever. You know, they're going the place that they want to go. And so, we need to be mindful of that, but I think we also need to be mindful of the fact that people are not going to go all the way out to Franklin on a regular basis.
Okay, as I recall, last time that Warren brought this up, and I think Louis made the final comment, I said, Warren, we got faith in you. And I think Jim has hit the nail on the head, Warren has really taken an active role in here, and has already got some changes going on. I think, Jim, I don't want to be specific on who should be in or not, but I think when you sit down and they come up with recommendations for the cost, I think you'll see that take care of itself. Just to gut, I could be totally wrong, but I think I picked up on some conversations from Warren on that. I'd also sit back and say to you that, you know, we've got to make every dime count in that, and I know we might go past six here, so I apologize, but we cannot sit back and run this city with continually reducing costs. You might be able to do it for a year, two, three years, maybe. If it's a business, I promise you, after trying to do it two or three years, they're either acquired, or they're out of business. We've got to grow revenues. And this is an opportunity that has been out there, that has not been operated properly, and has not had the success that we've been counting on. We must make them successful, and if they're not successful, we will pull back. But I had a conversation, what is it, the State Partnership, what's it called?
Virginia Economic Development Partnership.
They made it clear to me, you know, I'll be candid with you, I got, I was at a dinner at the governor's house with other mayors, and our great Secretary of Commerce says, I'm hearing that there's a city here that's going to pull out of the regional economic development alliance. It didn't hit me very well. I said, do you know why? No. Then we went around the table, guess what? Half the people didn't even know who the director was of the alliance. Half the people said they hadn't gotten a thing out of it. So all of a sudden, we had a few more mayors were ready to pull out, you know, so thank you, Mr. Secretary of Commerce. But, but my point to you is, people, and I hope you hear, I hope that's reported.
That also happened on the staff level, too. Until we got involved, all the other cities were, you know, just going along with the flow, and we're like, game has changed.
But my point is, I think that we all see that these changes that have started are good, but we're not, we haven't crossed the finish line yet, but I think Warren's participation is great. But my point that, what was made clear to me, and the partnership is private, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. He came to me and made it clear, you got to have it at a, we need something at a regional level, for them to be successful. They cannot reach out to every city when they're doing their job. And I have to take him at his word, he's very well respected. What's the guy's name?
Martin Bryley.
Okay, but anyway, he's doing a great job. I'd also sit back and say to you that we're working on a Spanish company right now, where I don't think we'd be close to crossing the finish line without the alliance recently helping us significantly.
They provided some translation assistance for us, yeah.
Well, they did, and they really were very helpful. And so, I believe that our request to Warren has been, he's honored our request, Louis, and that, you know, we're going to keep going this track, but looking for a lot of things to change for the better.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
We're their biggest cheerleaders, but we got to make this thing work.
Right.
We got to make it work. All right, we thank you very much. We've got one more thing to be added on, we're going to do it in three minutes. Dredging, Mr. Spoor.
Yeah, Bob is here. This is a potential, this just came up today, and it's an item we might want to consider adding to our legislative package next week.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members, council, you will be getting your legislative package Friday for adoption next week. The new item you haven't seen yet will be dealing with the neighborhood navigation projects and oyster beds. It's a fairly complicated issue, but we basically need to be able to get across oyster beds in order to build the navigation projects. I believe Councilmember Wood is going to be the sponsor for it. Another issue that you've seen, that will be in the package, is dealing with the Virginia Center for Hospitality Excellence, which is a workforce development project right up the street here, where we're going to jointly build a hotel with TCC and some private developers. And then there'll also be one less issue in the package, Councilmember Dyer has requested that we pull the item on the Line of Duty Act.
Very good.
I had also asked for the...
You're exactly right, yes. And I didn't get the input that we both agree on. There'll be another item, and thank you, Councilmember Henley, dealing with the state fully funding the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, body camera legislation, for instance, will cost them perhaps a million dollars a year, and just having the staff to review all the voluminous amount of videotape and all that we will have. And I didn't get the input today, so thank you for reminding me. I'll remind, so we'll have that one additional item also. Just wanted to give you all a heads up.
What was I going to say?
Well, actually, I guess we'll have, we want the, well, even, even without the body camera issue...
Yes.
The Commonwealth's Attorney's Office is...
Woefully underfunded.
Underfunded by the state for what it's supposed to be funded. It's just the same old thing, just like everything else. And I think that it's something that we need to, to single out, because we know that this other additional thing is coming, but I think it's a statement from us saying that, you know, we really want the state to do a better job of funding the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, to at least the level that is recommended by the compensation board.
Okay, we've got one more thing, John Lawson.
Remember last week, the lady spoke under open mic about the counting, doing a negative mortgage when they took the money out and created a debt, they were counting that as income with the disqualifying people. So the city attorney prepared an ordinance for the 20th. I appreciate the mayor and vice mayor's support, but I wanted to make sure that everybody had a chance to let Dana know whether or not they wanted to have their name on that before the agenda goes out for next week, so there's just a copy of what the mayor, vice mayor, myself are. But I didn't want to leave anybody, I think there was universal agreement, so I didn't want to look like there was any one person who was more in support of this than others, but I think it was a team sport. And I'll, here's one for Ruth, and I'll just let Dana know, and he'll amend it before it goes out, and then we'll have it done. I appreciate that consideration.
I've also asked Jim Spoor to try to get someone up here for the Commissioners of Revenue's office. We need to know that these things are being vetted, you know, these applications. I'm all for providing these, what's needed, but sometimes perhaps, there might be some things that are not being presented to us properly, and that's not right.
A good thing, I do know, if I could share just briefly, I do know a gentleman who was not happy with how much detail he was having to provide, not just end-year statements, but every month's statements. And I met with this gentleman twice and said, this is, someone else makes up for what you do. I'm glad he's asking all this, because we want to make sure that each and every person truly meets the needs of, Mr. Mayor, I'm right with you on that.
Thank you. Okay, Barbara.
Well, that particular issue, I think the way it was presented to us last week was not exactly correct, because I think the gentleman said that Virginia Beach has specifically said that it would be included, and I know that that was not the fact.
I didn't recall that, I sure didn't.
I absolutely know it was not the fact. I think that the, what had been reliant on was, I guess, the state requirement that certain funds, or however the Commissioner of Revenue determines which funds are counted and which aren't. But I know that we had never discussed the question of whether or not reverse mortgage, how it would count.
Agreed.
And so, it was just a matter of interpreting what counts and what doesn't, and that's pretty much left up to the Commissioner of Revenue's office, based on what the state law, or the state law provides. And Dana, I know, was very helpful in our meetings, in helping to explain what is and what isn't, and so, this is just something that was not discussed, and our ordinance did not specify that it would be included.
Very good. Thank you all for being here, sorry we went a couple of minutes over time.